Okay, all right. What's, hey, well, welcome to the Curry County Board of Commissioners Administrative Workshop, February 2nd, 2022. I'm going to call this meeting to order. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Presentations, ARP money use, Commissioner Pash.
Well, I just think it's time that we start to look at, you know, the committee met to discuss their, their thoughts on, on the applicants that submitted. And I know we're not bound to the committee's thoughts, but I'm sure we've all had several weeks to look, look them over. I've also had conversations with some of the members of that committee. And I just think it's time that we start to move forward with, you know, a plan or designation of some of these funds to get it moving.
Okay.
Do we have anything put up on the screen to show the applications or kind of a revised list by chance?
I don't know.
I don't.
I, I don't.
I have, I have the letter from the committee in front of me, from Chair Herzog.
Eric, can you hear us and, and maybe help get what's on JJ's com-? Got your computer speaker, your microphone. These, this email. Eric, Eric, there is, there is an Eric out there. I'm not just talking to myself.
He's hollering into space.
He's in a little room.
Eric, can you come in?
And he's really sharp. There you go. Can we get those on and then from JJ's computer, get stuff?
We just have to go to the county website.
We need the list of ARP applications to date. Eric. No, go to, no, ten minutes, minutes. Bottom left.
There you go.
And then the workshop.
Scroll a little bit.
And then, there you go. That's the letter from Mr. Hennig Scott.
Scroll down, yeah. You want to give me that, I can scroll.
Yeah.
The mouse. Who's got the mouse?
Whoops, I'm guilty.
Thanks, thanks, Eric. So now you folks can see what we can see on our computers. And this is, are we, should we go to public comments?
Yes.
Mary Rose first.
I'm Mary Rowe. I have some comments about the allocation of the ARP funds. With all the life and death situations in Curry County due to the COVID, I am shocked that the Gold Beach Main Street Committee's proposal for $30,000 is even being passed on to the ARP Committee and considered by you. I am also disappointed that the city of Brookings, which has its own ARP funds, wants some of the county's ARP funds to improve the kid town structure in Azalea Park. I want to support the Brookings Harbor Food Bank, which has responded tremendously to the COVID virus and very professionally. I support the spending of ARP funds on housing as the effects of dealing with the COVID have contributed to a huge spike in housing prices and rents. And I am in favor of funding supportive services for housing, including senior housing, which has waiting lists two to three times as long as for other housing. Also, I have asked the BOC repeatedly to fund the position of Housing Development Specialist who would write housing grants and otherwise oversee housing development and the development of supportive services. Economic Development Coordinator Madison and Director Swift could write a job description and you could and should fund it with ARP funds. Lastly, despite the vilification of all people experiencing homelessness which occurred here this morning, I would like to say as an MSW, Masters in Social Work, that the facts prove otherwise. We in fact have a housing crisis. Many good community members, including myself, are in danger of becoming displaced and homeless. Oasis Shelter Home is closed. We no longer have any shelter for vulnerable elders, families with children, abused women, or anybody. It is no longer them, it is now us. And in many instances, this is not due to a poor choice and that attitude is victim blaming. We do need a shelter somewhere of some kind. Please set aside some ARP funds for that purpose and ask for proposals from responsible organizations. And also for a shower trailer to be added to our county motor pool, which could be used for all kinds of emergencies. Last time I checked, there were only about 12 showers available per week at St. Tim's, which has two showers to utilize. And I'd also like to recommend that you fund Core Response, which would help people experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Barker Hildago.
Hi, Beth Barker Hildago. I want to speak on behalf of the ARP funds and the proposals that you received. There are two infrastructure proposals that you have before you, Harbor Utility District and Ofer Naseka Water. I'm going to suggest that those proposals should not be considered for our funding since there is a considerable amount of infrastructure funding on the table and that those are infrastructure projects. So that's my two cents. I got your feedback this morning about our project. And I'm going to tell you, I'm standing on the right side of this issue and maybe someday you'll join me in, in that, in that walk. And if, when the law comes into effect in 2023, making it municipalities and governing agencies responsible for providing shelter for your unhoused in your community, remember this day because we tried to lean forward and help y'all do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Don Kendall, Naseka Beach.
Don Kendall, Chair of the Naseka Ofer Water District. Just to bring it up, there were some questions that were asked primarily in this about where else we could receive funding, et cetera, et cetera. One thing I could relate to Beth Barker Hildago is we provide the water for that facility and we're very, very leery of an increase in water used there. However, to take a step back, to answer the questions that were asked on here where we could get the money in different locations, we'd like to have this committee's help in finding some of those locations. We're at over 25% loan to our income as it stands right now. That's not normal bills, that's just 25% on a loan that was taken out 10 years ago to increase water to come from the pumping station coming uphill toward the Naseka Beach Ofer area. Now, we do supply water into the hill, Indian Hills area and down along North Bank area and come up Edson Creek Road and we stop at the Adams Bridge. There was a lot of political things that happened trying to cross the Adams Bridge with some water, so that's where it stopped at that time and water needs to come up the hill. To give clean, proper drinking water to people, we need to do some things. What we have on here is to put a facility closer where people see it and is not broken into two to three times a year where we have now. And to store emergency supplies such as plumbing. If we have a small earthquake, we will not be able to respond timely to give water back to people. And that's why we're putting in for this grant is to assist us to do that very thing. Thank you.
Questions? Just don't stay there, Don.
Are you going to have, have questions at the end after we, after all the public comment or?
Well, that's, I only had three public comments, so you can ask a question right now. I think maybe more people want to speak, but they just, and that's fine. We just had three official.
But we don't have, they don't have to have, understand you don't have to have comment cards, correct?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't need them.
So I'm going to give you a little shout out, former Curry County Emergency Management Coordinator. Welcome back. You did an incredible job. You know, just each of you there, we have the property for the fire training center that of course we're very excited about. And we're going to need a lot of water. I want to ask you a question and you don't have to answer if you don't want to. And the whole board is in favor of the fire training center. Because we're going to be using water, is there a potential conflict of interest if we vote on this project? You know, I, Council Pope will probably weigh in at some point. I don't think there is, you know, to make that fly, you have to have a financial personal gain. And it's not just for, I mean, you have several customers that you're dealing with and trying to accommodate and upgrade. And by the way, real quick, I, I'm still working on a 20, you know, 10-year water plan that through AOC and that'll bring the whole county together if I can get the board to approve. So anyway, too long of a question there. Welcome back, Don Kendall.
Thank you. And I don't believe there would be a conflict of interest. I understand the concept of what's happening, being on the board for the Naseka Ofer Fire District also. I, I see issues that are happening and that's one of the things we're trying to feed. A little bit more money into our coffers to put in buildings, put in more, so we could have pipe available so we don't have to wake the travel time and delivery constantly being behind the curve is what our goal is here.
Pretty important out there. Thank you again. I have another comment, but it can wait.
I'm good, Don.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sam Baugh.
Sam Baugh, Advanced Healthcare. We, we would strongly recommend you as a council, as a commission, look at providing homes for workforce housing and the houseless that live in your community. I was part of the point in time count last week and there are several individuals in your community that are homeless, that need help. Directing your ARP funds towards homelessness, houselessness will help increase the health care, the mental health, and be able to provide individuals a place to stay as well as draw individuals to your area to help grow the, the region, grow the county, and be able to solidify Curry County as a place that people want to be. And so that, that's my comment is just focus on workforce housing, make it so people can live here. Thanks.
Well, we're waiting, just a quick comment there. Both Commissioner Pash and I highlighted, highlighted that for veterans and workforce housing considerable today in the earlier meeting, plus it's, it's been on our radar and work. It's well said though, but totally agree and understand and it is critical. Thank you.
Of course you want to say?
No, I, I'm going to reserve my comments for a little bit. I, I want to speak a little bit more broadly on some things in a while. Thank you.
All right. David Barnes. So just a second ma'am, right after David. He actually, you don't have to, but if you got one, you get, you get priority, so.
Oh.
Yeah, it's, it's in black and white.
Good afternoon, I'm David Barnes, I'm the county treasurer. There's several of these applications that have been advanced by the ARP Committee that are, in my view, are not ARP eligible. So I don't know at what point you want to discuss those or, you know, how you want to do that according to the agenda, you know? If you want, when you bring up a topic, you can, I can offer an opinion on it, but I, other than that, I don't know. You know, I tried to speak in front of the ARP Committee at their last meeting and was told that I was unwelcome to speak. So unfortunately, I'm, they appear to have wasted a large amount of time discussing applications to just plain aren't ARP eligible.
Okay.
So before you guys make that same mistake and waste that time, I'd like to, you know, when it, when the time comes, I don't know how you want to do it, but thank you.
I think now's, now's a good time as any, I think.
Why don't we ask him, yes, if we could, just in his opinion, what, what, what the general qualifications would be. I, it's no, no secret that I have submitted to this board and stated publicly that we do have a reasonable amount of flexibility and opportunities here to do our best for our county. So I don't want it to be a political deal where I like this project and so it qualifies. I don't like that project, so it doesn't qualify. So, thank you. So if you're, if you're willing to do that.
One of the, one of the things, I, I agree with you Commissioner Boyce, there is flexibility. But what the, the issue with that is that if we are found to have misspent this money, it becomes a finding on our single audit and we are disqualified from all federal aid by doing so. I'm pretty conservative when it comes to gambling with the county's money. You know, we get, we get Pilt money, we get SRS money, we get money from the Forest Service. I'm not sure the other federal monies that we get, but jeopardizing that money in order to approve a project that is plainly not going to be ARP eligible is something that I'm very hesitant to do. You know, I just, I, I'm, that's a gamble, I, it's a gamble with county funds that I'm not willing to take, quite frankly. So, so that does instill a little bit of fear in local government, cities, counties throughout the United States, which I understand. That's where local elected officials have an incredible responsibility and burden to spend very wisely. I think you saw an email that I sent that basically there's an intent here to be above board, above reproach, and to do everything possible to, to fit in those guidelines. But every county, every city is so uniquely different. What is most important is what benefits the long term. The citizen's interest in the long term and in the form of an investment. So when I, when I submitted my program, very preliminary twice in the last six or eight months for the ARP funds, it was with that context. This has got to be an investment. You agreed on some, you disagreed on some, which of course that's good business, that's good, that's good exchanges. So I'm just not going to live in that fear. You know, I'm not going to be haphazard or lackadaisical, but I'm going to look in, in every possible aspect of what will benefit. And you, you know, for example, and then I'll step down, Mr. Chair, thank you. For example, you mentioned some of the businesses that, you know, perhaps the 10,000 people that are working in this county that stayed with the jobs and, and through thick and thin and all the adversity and all the times, you know, that would be a half a million dollars right there if we went to, you know, for $50 to each one of those people. And I think we could do that. Is that the best investment? You know, I think that would be up this board with, with other elected official and, and department manager and certainly the committee's input. So, yeah, and we're behind. We are behind on this, so that, I think we're going to have to have a workshop probably, you know, once a week that we really wrestle this out and get it done. So, thanks, that took too long. No, that's all right. Before I go further though, correction was it was, at the time, I believe, when I spoke to this committee about premium pay for essential workers, I had estimated there was 1,800 people in the county who had worked, who work in what's considered to be a customer contact business. Since that time, that number has come down significantly. Now, I now believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200. And my, my idea was to give them each a $500 bonus. I've spoken to people from Ray's, from Gold Beach Lumber, from McKay's, and they are all on board with it. The idea would be to buy $500 gift cards to award to people. We would obviously have a release saying that they'd been on a job for the whole year and so on, but that's further down the road. That's a different application further down the road from here. Just going, if we could start at the top on this one.
Number one.
Yeah, we'll go, just start at number one. This is an application. Let me, it's going to take me a moment here. The committee decided, looked at this and said that it needs more information, especially about to break down in office supplies. This is looking to fund positions within the, most of this is looking to fund three full-time positions for resource navigation, program assistant, community health worker type of stuff. Yes, this is an ARP, I would think this would be an ARP approved expense, but this falls under public health. And the county doesn't do public health anymore. And our, our public health response is now coordinated by the state health authority. So before we go spending money for public health issues, we should really be reaching out to OHA and seeing what they're doing because at this point in time, you know, we've given up our, we've given up our public health funding from the state also. And if we need public health, then it really becomes incumbent upon the state to be the ones providing that to us. Since we gave it back to them, you know, it's only fair that they now provide for it. And I would think that Brookings Core Response would go through the, would be better off going through OHA and trying to get the money from them for what they want to do. But you know, again, it is public health and that is one of the acceptable uses. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Herzog, back to where you started at the beginning, I, one of you asked the question, there's four accepted uses for the ARP program. They are, one of them is public health. One of, the second one is basically premium pay for essential workers and helping out households in need. The third one is the replacement of lost revenue and the fourth one is for infrastructure spending. The county's already committed to, hang on, I have a list here. The county has already committed to approximately a million dollars worth of spending.
You've got a million left.
It was about a million.
Over a million dollars, a million seventeen thousand.
Was what was spent so far?
Yes.
Okay. And so that leaves about a million two left over.
For the first go around.
For the first round, yes. We've spent money on communication system, on setting money aside to help county employees who go out and have used up all their sick time. We spent, we set money aside for PPEs and for sanitation of the county buildings, for a hyperbolic oxygen chamber therapy project and, and another more money.
Langlois Water District.
Excuse me?
Langlois Water District.
Ten thousand for that.
Thank you, $10,000 for the Langlois Water District. So that leaves the rest of it to be, still be allotted. If we can move down the list to number two, Mr. Ed's, it says on there that it may be better funded through a different venue such as community development or private banking. There's also PPP money that would be available for businesses. According to the ARP plan, in order for a business to get money for upgrade or rebuilding, I believe that it says that the plans have to be in the works for two years. And I doubt, I do not think, I, like, two years ago, Mr. Ed was still in his original location and doing business, so I'm not sure whether this one would actually go through or not. Number three, Rogue Coast Community Graphics, I don't argue with that not being a ARP expense that's to support a new local business. Number four, Brookings Community Harbor Helpers. Hold on, let me try my. This one here runs afoul because they are looking, I don't have an issue with the hiring people and the community helper part of it, but they are looking to set aside money into a rainy day fund with this. And that is a specific, very specific no-no in the ARP, in the ARP paperwork. You are not allowed to create rainy day funds. So this would, they are asking for, I can't read the small handwriting on this, I have my mind.
Hundred twenty-three, nine eighty-eight.
Yeah, but part of that, they want a bilingual advocate and staff position, purchasing food is, is all right, but then they're setting aside money and that's something that cannot happen, so that would have to be taken out of the application if that goes forward. The Gold Beach Community Center, I think is, I agree with what they say there, that's absolutely an ARP appropriate expense and it does well for the people. You know, they, they do good work over there, they bring food out to a lot of people who just can't get out anymore, so that would fall into helping the community. Number six, Nescau Water Ofer District, that's an infrastructure project. It specifically states water and broadband in, in the ARP Act, so that would be appropriate. The JNA PETA, I've read that application and I don't feel that that would be appropriate for, if you read the application, the things they put in there. Curry Homeless Coalition, the board decided on that one this morning and decided to decline that. Number nine is anonymous, that was me. I put it in as anonymous because it just, I don't want credit, I just want to see this happen. Like I said, that would come down from 900,000 to 600,000 based on my most recent estimates of the number of people that are still employed in this county. I set that as being employed on the job on January 1st of 2021 and still on the job on December 31st. So my new, my new number's probably closer to 1,200 than it was to 1,800. So you know, Fred Myers has less than half of the people that I anticipated would be eligible, so using them as a gauge. You know, Gold Beach Lumber has 75 people. Umpqua Bank has another 20 in their different locations in the county. Credit Union, Rogue Credit Union is about the same. And then there's the gas stations in other places that, that add up for the rest of it. But that definitely falls under item number two, which is providing premium pay to essential workers. As Commissioner Boyce reminded us, these are the people who kept us going through all this. The ones who pumped our gas, who stocked the shelves in our food stores, who.
Or masked 12 hours, eight hours.
Yes, you know, who've been bound by the mask mandates because their businesses require it. You know, so these are the people, I absolutely feel these people are deserving of it, you know? And I've gotten great support from people who I've gone out and spoken to it about. But that's, I'm kind of stepping aside from that one. Gold Beach Main Street, $30,000 to, for a study to put, I'm sorry, power, to put the power lines underground. We heard a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, that Kuz Curry Electric has the highest or if not one of the highest reliability rates amongst co-ops in this country. And I just, I don't know how we can justify spending $30,000 on a study when we already have tremendous infrastr- electrical infrastructure. You know, I can't find, I don't see a way to tie this to COVID. And you know, I know there's people here from the Gold Beach Project and if they'd like to come up and try to change your minds and change my mind, I'd love to hear it, but I just, you know, I've spoken to Lori about it before and I told her to put in an application, but I just, I don't know how it would tie to ARP money. The Harbor Water District, again, that's an infrastructure project that relates to drinking water, so that would definitely fall within. The kids playground rebuild in Brookings, I don't know how that fits into ARP, that just doesn't, you know, the city of Brookings got ARP money, if they want to spend $218,000 to rebuild their thought lot, that's up to them, but I'm just not seeing how, you know, as I said, with, with the Gold Beach Project, if they have a representative here who wants to stand up and try to defend it and make it so that it ties into one of the four elements, then I'd be more than willing to listen as I know you all will. And Brookings Community Harbor Helpers for 295, that one is, again, that is a public health issue that should really be dealt with by OHA, but the large part of that application is for, towards the purchase of a piece of property, I believe, for a facility down in Brookings. And one thing that I, one thing that I've learned over the last few years of coming to meetings is that this, this board's record of financing other people to do public health for us has been less than stellar. We were in lawsuit for what, two years plus with the last group of people who we hired to do public health for us. And I just, I would really advise the commission strongly to both look at this and to go into this very hesitantly, you know? We, do we want to get tied up buying more things for another group that's supposed to be providing public health? You know, we, the last group, I think Curry Community Health, and we just, that did not end well for the county, you know? It cost us a lot of money, we lost a lot of stuff and we spent, I don't know how many hours of, of our attorneys spent in court and working on that. know how many hours of, of our attorneys spent in court and working on that.
Thank you very much for acknowledging that. Yeah, very important.
Yes. You know, so I, I just, I hope that you keep that in mind and it causes you some hesitation when you look at this project. But those are the only applications that the committee decided on and sent something to you. So, um, I just, if, there was, I think there's at least one more application that was submitted, but it wasn't submitted in time for the ARP committee to discuss it. So I don't know if it should be discussed here today or not.
Well, it can be. Is that the Port of, Port Orford? Um, Pat Cox was, what, what was it that you?
The other one that I'm aware of was one that, um, supposedly came from the Curry Housing Committee. But I'm on that committee and I don't recall us voting to submit an application, so.
I just thought I, I, I thought Pat Cox from the Port of, you know, mayor of Port Orford and Port of-
Good point. He didn't do an application. They don't actually have to do an application if they, they sent, they sent a letter.
Correct.
And so did all three ports. And, you know, that, that was the first thing I took a look at in the very beginning of this. And I put down a hundred twenty-five thousand, just a random figure, split equally three ways. And boy, I, I see what they're up against and how important those are to our counties. I don't want to make that case now, but, uh, yeah, thank you.
Exactly. Like you, like Commissioner Bush just said, you, there is no, these applications are not binding. This, these were not from your committee. And as you stated at the outset, Commissioner Herzog, you are not bound by these recommendations by the ARP committee. They're just recommendations.
Yeah.
So it's really up to you to decide how you want to go with this. You know, I'm just trying to, to bring up the, the ones that I don't feel are eligible so that maybe, you know, you don't spend a lot of time on that, or you want to specifically speak to those people and, and ask them to, to try to defend it to you. So, but that was pretty much it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your time and, and that's a huge ARP book or whatever regulation. So, um, I'm glad you look at it, not me. That, that stuff doesn't, I don't do good with that.
I sleep with this now.
Yeah. Court, you got a question for Dave?
He sleeps with, lucky for us. Um, yeah, real quick, um, public health and mental health go together, all, in the, in this, in this concept.
Correct.
Yeah, that's all, all I need to know. Well, yeah, as we try and get mental health dollars and compete for the half a billion that's within the state of Oregon, anything we might have for matching could, could bring some good results. So, you know, my initial thought on that several months ago was fifty thousand because there's a, and after today's meeting, you saw, you know, uh, what options we do have to make a difference. Uh, it was just not addictions, it's just not mental health issues, it's a combination and everyone is different. So, um, yeah, in your opinion, that would obviously qualify.
Yes.
Thank you.
And one thing I do need to mention to you in closing though, is that I do need to submit a report to the United States Treasury pretty soon about how we have allocated this money. And we're gonna, I need you guys to kind of move on it.
Okay.
Sooner rather than later.
All right. Do you have one more?
No rush though, but just when you can.
You know, it's, it's like our, it's like our Title III money. They use the, the two words initiate and then obligate. And so that sometimes is a little hard to follow. Um, however, uh, if, if we obligate, that's more of a pledge. Would you agree? That it's not a promise. It's, it's kind of somewhat of a pledge.
It, it depends, that is a matter of semantics and that's really about what word you use. Um, if you oblig, if you pledge it, you are obligating it. If you allocate it, you are not. You are just saying that this is what we would like to spend it on. But there is a difference between the words, like should and shall. One is a word of command, one is a word of suggestion. So, you know, but you're getting, you're getting into bantering semantics back and forth at that point, so.
Did you agree that's the language they're using?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Well, you know, they, they were-
We shall do it.
They're asking for allocate, they're asking for us to allocate the money. So whether we remove the allocation in the future and put it to some other use, that's fine. It's just, it, they want to know what we're intending to spend it on pretty soon.
Yeah, I just ask that we, we can help you with the responsibilities of, uh, you know, less pressure on getting that done. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Who would like to speak next? That, that, Lori, that lady in front of you, I think, was it, she's one, one in front of you.
Lori.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't know what the order is.
You're next. Lori, you're next. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm DeRagstee. I'm the board president of the Gold Beach Community Center. Um, I want all of you to, um, understand what we do there. And basically during COVID for the last two years, our main priority has been to make sure that our most vulnerable residents receive food, meals, not just a box of food. We provide, um, for home, and, and I want to specifically talk about homebound seniors and, um, disabled persons in our community. We serve from Eucker Creek to the north, Lobster Creek to the east, and Pistol River to the south. And volunteers twice a week deliver, um, uh, for the whole month, they deliver seven hundred, an average of seven hundred meals to people in, within that thirty-mile radius there. And all of our funding for homebound, um, folks comes from grants and donations. And we do get a little bit of money from the federal government through the, um, uh, Older Americans Act. And, uh, but we have to come up with a pretty significant gap in the cost of providing the meals. It, um, is over seven dollars roughly or more to provide a meal for folks. And these are all meals that are nutritious and they're approved by a, a registered dietitian for proportion and, um, uh, nutritional content. So our volunteers do not receive any money. In fact, we have one volunteer who has been delivering for seventeen years. Uh, yeah, she's Marilyn, um, she, uh, she's just been doing this for many years. So they do not receive any money. So all of our money that we raise through donations, grants, go toward meal preparation right now during COVID. That's been our top priority is to make sure we get meals out there. So what we're asking for is a gap funding because we don't know when we can fundraise again because most of our fundraising is done through activities that pretty much center around people coming into the center. We used to be the seniors center, by the way. We are now the Gold Beach Community Center down here, um, by the port. And so we're, fundraising has been very, very limited for us. Um, we do not charge anybody for anything. Everything is donation-based or grant-based. So we're asking for, um, just a, a kind of gap funding for nine months for twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars to help us provide seven hundred meals a month to our homebound seniors and disabled persons. And I would be really happy to answer any of your questions. And I would love to invite all of you to come down on a Tuesday or Friday between eleven and one to, um, actually experience one of our meals that's prepared by our, um, wonderful chef, Mark Ferris, who's been there for over fourteen years. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Before you leave, you just answered one of my questions because, you know, I thought maybe there was something specific you were going to buy because you, it is kind of a, it's twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine, but that's, yeah, you did the math with the seven dollars and?
Yeah, it's, our gap is four dollars and seventy-three cents a meal.
Okay.
And if you multiply that by seven hundred meals a month for nine months, that's how you get the twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars to help us with this gap funding.
Gotcha. So stay there.
For COVID.
My other question would be, I guess for David Barnes on this, when we say gap funding, is, that's not rainy day or, okay, all right, we're good then. Thank you, ma'am.
No, we're just, we're COVID.
Any other questions?
This is about as COVID-related as you get because we need to get food out to people.
I appreciate it.
I personally just want to say thank you for what you do.
Wow, thank you. You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Just, do you know where your buildings came from, by the way? The history of that?
Yes, I do. I know all about the history and I am really insteeped in the history of that building. And did you know that we just fundraised it and got a new roof because it's been leaking like a sieve? So, um, our new roof is on, so we can continue to operate.
So you want to just give a real brief history of that for the, you know?
Oh, my gosh, sure.
Lori Van Zant might be the only one here that, that may remember.
So that building, um, was one of the first three recreational shellfish, uh, excuse me, recreational salmon fishing resorts on the Lower Rogue River on the Wetterburn side of the river. So it used to be, hm?
Jot's Resort.
It's where Jot's Resort is now located. It was built by Maude and Vance Scott in nineteen thirty-eight to nineteen forty. It operated as Scott Swite Cedar Lodge and Resort. It was occupied by the, um, US Coast Guard during the World War Two. We were, they were, um, basically it was the, um, they called them the Sand Pounders. It was the Coast Guard monitoring and patrolling the entire Pacific coast during the, um, World War Two. And they were located in our area in the Gold Beach Community Center building when it was located over in Wetterburn. And then it was, um, when Mr. Vance Scott passed away, uh, his wife Maude Scott continued to run it until she passed, uh, and she did not pass away. She's lived to be a hundred and like two, but she sold it. And it became, um, the Del Rogue Restaurant, which many people, uh, old timers have a lot of stories to tell about.
Yeah, my dad was a bartender in there back in the fifties.
Yeah. And then, um, when, uh, the Jotaninis, the, the father and the son got together, they owned all three of the resorts, um, along the Lower Rogue River there. They got together and that formed the Jot's Resort. Uh, they offered the building for, um, a donation to the seniors club at the time, nineteen eighty-two. Uh, then it was moved, cut in four parts, moved across the river with logging trucks, reassembled and a piece of land that Mr. Fisk, um, donated to the Gold Beach, uh, Seniors Club over where we are located now. So it was all donated, the Gold Beach Community Club, or excuse me, Gold Beach Community Center owns and operates, um, and as a nonprofit, total nonprofit. And we own the building and the land. And it was all donated by, um, private, you know, citizens who cared about the community.
Good people.
Yeah, really good people and a lot of work went into moving that building over there. So come by anytime. That's a little plug.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that little intermission, Mr. Chair.
Lori Van Zant. Lori, Lori.
Sorry for trying to get in front of you, Dee.
Uh, anytime, Lori. I was a waitress there in the early twenties. Used to have to serve whatever it was.
Early twenties?
I mean, in my early twenties.
Wow.
Wrong number.
Let's see, were you a flapper or?
I used to have to serve martinis to Lex Fran. So that was really scary.
And he could put them away too, couldn't he?
Yeah. So, um, first I wanted to thank Paul for having such passion for protecting our county. I beg to differ a little bit about your perspective because I looked on the county website and it states right on the site through the federal guidelines that public health is part of what can be funded and of course, infrastructure, which I guess is a loose word in terms of interpretation. But for us, as Gold Beach Main Street, um, we are a thousand percent supportive of anything that helps, um, needy people for sure. And we're all, all in support of the housing that really desperately needs to happen here. Um, we are the county seat, however, and, uh, Court asked us to look at the elevation of all the city halls in the county. And this one is the lowest. Um, Brookings is the highest and Port Orford is in the middle. So we are the county seat. We do feel protective of the infrastructure of the county in terms of it being safe when we're in a tsunami zone. And we take that all into consideration in wanting to do this project. A lot of our sidewalks are not ADA compliant, which of course means that we plan to involve ODOT in the expense of this, um, project. And, um, economic recovery from COVID, really seriously, uh, we need to join the twenty-first century. We need to, we have businesses that are visible along Main Street. Look at Florence. Murray Smith, the engineers did Florence and they, I don't know if any of you have driven through, but they did a phenomenal job. And what, do we want a little more industry? Do we want people to move here? Do we want businesses to thrive? I just spoke to somebody on Main Street at lunch today and he said, you can't see my business because of all the poles in front of it. You know, so we get that this can go in conjunction with all the other funding that needs to happen to help our county to thrive. And Brookings has seen some of the benefits of this and Gold Beach desperately needs it also. Um, we're talking about, you know, a minimal amount of money because we've already got Ford that wants to come in and join us for twenty thousand. We've got Wild Rivers Coast Alliance and Bandon Dunes has committed to it. We've got the Urban Renewal of the City that's committed to it. So we're not coming to the county just asking for all the money. We're working hard to get matching funds. And with that said, you know, Wyden has just passed an infrastructure bill and it's ten billion dollars. And the intent of that money is to go to prioritize small rural towns for infrastructure and underground power. It's, the, the bill is called Disaster Safe Power Grid Act. So if those ten billion, I would bet that the one-mile stretch that we need to put underground can get some really good funding. And, uh, that's what we're betting on. And we're just bringing very little local money to this job to get it done. But we think the end effects of where we can grow, we need a little more of a middle class. No, we don't want to be a great big town, but think back to when the mill was open and how was the town then? There was a lot more jobs. We get the housing. So we all work together on these, all these different facets to bring our town up to where it needs to be. We've got healthcare, we, it'll improve our schools. You know, that's basically what I want to say. And I don't know if I said, um, it's a long process. It's going to be seven to nine months for the feasibility study. And so in that time, Gold Beach Main Street's role would be to be an advocate for bringing people together that can provide the funding. You know, Ford just gave us five thousand for a consultant to help us identify who's out there that's going to bring this money to our county. So we're going to put in thirty and we're going to get, I don't, I don't know, ten million that's going to come here and help us. So it's, it's a smart investment. And, uh, if you believe in Gold Beach and want to see lamp posts and banners and flower, and flower baskets throughout town to have some continuity in that one-mile stretch, this is what will make it happen. And even Chris said, let's put some, uh, little cafes out on Main Street and let's, let's-
Tulane Road with forty-foot sidewalks and cafes and shops.
There you go. Now there's another controversial topic, which is, uh, traffic calming. So, yeah, so, um, but we've seen what it's done for Brookings and we've seen what it's done for other towns. And it's, it's our turn. And so we really hope you as commissioners will support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I've, I've been through Florence a hundred times since they did it. And it's, it's absolutely beautiful what they did there.
Who else would like to speak on behalf of whatever they would like to speak about? Yes, ma'am. Oh, there's Brookings Harbor Community Helper.
Hi.
Hi.
I apologize. There is a lot of, um, stops between here and Brookings, or Brookings and here. So.
Oh, it's road construction?
I ended up having to run back because I thought I had everything in my folder and I did not. And, um, so my name is Pamela Weinberger. I'm the executive director for the Brookings Harbor Community Helpers. And most of you know, this is Janelle Howard from the city of Brookings, the city manager. Um, our application for ARP funds speaks to the need of needing to expand our services, not to put money away for a rainy day. We very carefully, when we did our ARP grant, we looked at the money we have coming in, the money we've applied for. We've applied for, of course, the ARP funds, um, from two different, which I will address, um, with Janelle in just a minute. Um, one of them is exactly for having a bilingual interpreter, which during the pandemic, we identified there's a language barrier there. And we had a whole community of people who were not even getting services. To be honest, I don't even know how they ate during that time other than that community is very strong, very supportive of each other. But we realized that there was a language barrier, thankful to all care for giving us a grant to support that position. Um, but that's short-term, not long-term. Um, one of the things that we'd like to do is make sure that we have that person there so that we can address, um, any type of, um, uh, communication or language barriers that we have with the Hispanic community. So that never breaks down again. Um, some of the other things are that we are at capacity. We have no more room to do, to store anything else in our, we're, we're buying, uh, eight by twenty containers and putting them in people's yards to store the stuff that we have for COVID, for PPEs. Um, we were, um, and are a recipient of OHA funds for community-based, as a community-based organization. Um, unfortunately, what we've seen in the last couple of years is the, the service gaps get wider and wider and there's less and less people doing what we, um, are now doing. Prior to twenty twenty, we, we only gave food as a way to help people that are, um, have food insecurities in our communities. However, now we are providing services and people come to us to help them navigate through social security and to try to get a food stamp app and different things like that. And so that part of it, um, buying food and thing is to make sure that we have the food on the shelves, that we don't, uh, go without. For instance, just the other day, South Coast Food Share, where we get our food at, all their freezers went down over the weekend. Nobody knew until Monday. So all the food that we were supposed to give for that week was gone. And so we had to go out and buy and purchase. Well, everybody has been to the stores, know that there's not a whole lot on the shelves right now. So those kind of things to me is not a rainy day, but security that I know that if a family comes in, I can feed them. Um, on Friday, just Friday, we're open for four hours. We had eighty people come through either our office or the food bank, eighty people in four hours to get food or to get help, um, to get a pair of socks or whatever it is. There's, there's a, a lot of things that we, we- There's a, a lot of things that we, we give. The other part of, the second part of that grant is with the City of Brookings. Janelle and I have talked at many occasions because, because we are at capacity, we have to have a bigger building. And so we are partnering with the city so that we can find a building. We have applied for USDA. We are waiting for that approval and I don't know what of it will be. Unfortunately, USDA does not do capacity building. They will help you buy a building, but it takes two years to qualify and it's under their guidelines. And we don't have two years to wait. First of all, we have to find a building, of course. So the USDA doesn't do that, but what they do is they have an emergency grant that just closed up and we are in that. So we're hoping to get money for that. And so everything that we've put in our application is a portion of what we've already put in, what we anticipate we will get from either Ford Family Foundation with the in-kind services from the city, from the ARP funds and from our donors and contributors, Advanced Health, All Care, Ford Family Foundation, the Oregon Community Foundation. We are partnering with over 100 individuals and organizations in our state to make sure that we can always provide and we were there every day for people that need services. Just for somebody that lost their ID and that can get somebody to pay the $10 so they can get their ID too and get a job. Now they have a job. We've paid the $10 and now they have a job. There is nobody in Brookings Harbor that is doing that kind of work. It's not public health, it's social services. And we are providing that to them. We intend on continuing to be effective and efficient in what we do. And that is the one way we're going to be able to do it, is to partner with the City of Brookings to get some of the ARP funds because we, it has been that we have been affected by COVID. This is what has happened. It's recognized that people don't just need food. There's a lot of other things that people need. And we have the ability to be able to do that. And so I thank you as commissioners for hearing us today. And Janelle, would you like to add anything?
I'm just going to add to the partnership and just trying to work with her. I think just independently, I was looking at sort of the needs and it was sort of ironic that we crossed paths at different times. And she had sort of the same vision I did and as far as that partnership and looking for bigger ways to connect with different organizations and fill this need. There's just, there's a larger gap and it's more than food. And it, and it was impressive what she stepped up and did during the last couple of years and just provided different services. Just, you know, you see a need and you start providing a different service. And completely agree that she's outgrown her space and we've been working hard to try to find space that would accommodate and be in a, an area that would be beneficial to everybody close to other services and stuff that will help. So we just wanted to be part of it and help and with our, the public works side, with the designing, with the trying to, you know, there's not a lot of choices with buildings, so taking that and remodeling and revising and being a part of that, whether it's partly financial and a lot of in-kind, but I think both. So that was on that subject thing.
Do you have any questions?
Chris?
Well, I just, and I'm sorry to ask this, but we get asked, so I ask. What is the screening process that you have for people that come there that say they need food or they, is there a screening process or do you just feed?
No, there's a screening process. We have to ask them questions like, and instead of an ask and a question, because that's kind of, sometimes people get kind of like, oh, well. We say, if you make less than $3,000 and you have a family of this size, then you qualify. Do you qualify for our program? And they'll say yes. We also know the people that come in. We know because we've either interacted with them several times and stuff and we get to know people. And so we know when somebody's pulling the wool over our eyes. We're very discerning in that way. And, and then we know when people are absolutely legitimate. And we have many success stories and that's the thing. We want to, we want to see an end. We want to see an end to whatever we're doing, whatever we're providing. Is there an end? Somehow can we better use so that you don't have to use these services and goes on to use for somebody else? So yes, we do have that process.
One more comment is, I salute you guys for doing what you do.
Thank you.
Amazing to see people give back.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've, we've stayed open the whole time, all of our workers. We lost half of our volunteers that, but we, all of the people that work with Brookings Harbor Community Helpers, we've kept them the whole time and we provided 51,000 services last year.
Wow.
And that's a lot.
That is.
That's a lot. And I'm very proud to work with the companies and the organization stuff I do. They make my job a little easier. Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you too and you do have the prettiest mask in the, in the room.
There's a ditto over there.
There's a close second over here with the flag. So the.
We bought them at the same place.
The place on Hemlock, right?
Yes.
Is, is way small and do you have a, any, a site or are you going to, and you're going to keep both or try to?
No, 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 because that one was gifted to us and so we can sell it and invest it and that's what we would do.
Okay.
The building that we have where four people work, it's 625 square feet.
Yeah.
The food bank is 1,400 square feet. I don't know how much the lot is. We have one current eight by 20 container on there. And we have two more that we're ordering and getting some help with that. So yeah, we, we just have to have something. And so whatever we have, whatever we can take from that building, that property after we sell it, it will go into the new property or an existing property or whatever we can find to do it. And we are searching.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
You're going to help me the food forum this spring, right?
Yes, I'm going to.
Somehow you're going to find the time.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
And you'll recruit some other people for us.
Oh, you know I will.
You know, anything, yes, I, I, we all really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
And I even talked to you about kind of moving north a little bit and nudging some of, some of the folks in central and North Curry County. So yeah, anything to do with food, I think that is an easy qualifier and, you know, the conversation we've had about just teaching people to, you know, in your backyard, you might be able to grow lettuce or whatever. And so those days are coming and I think we've got to really focus on that. And it's, you said a minute ago, some of the shelves are bare. You know, my mom drinks this almond milk and, well, she's really stressed. She'll be 90 in April. She's really a little bit concerned because she didn't, couldn't find her almond milk at McKay's the other day, so.
Absolutely. And just so you know, we don't just do Brookings and Harbor. We help people in Port Orford, Langlois and, and Gold Beach as well. We had a young lady who had just had a baby, couldn't get a WIC appointment. She lived in Port Orford and, sorry, it's telling me to go somewhere. And so she contacted us because she heard the Brookings Harbor Community Helpers were helping her. All she wanted was formula for that baby because we couldn't get her any. And there was no other organizations that would. So we bought her the $80 worth of formulas she could have until she could get to her WIC appointment. So we do those kind of things, not just for Brookings Harbor. We are, we are, you know, looking at Curry County as being a place where we need to make sure that we invest.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for making the drive up.
Absolutely.
Janelle, go ahead.
One other, on the subject of Kidtown.
Okay.
I was just, I respectfully disagree with Dave. The, the Kidtown parks recreation fits within the, it's under the disproportionately impacted communities, but under healthy childhood environments. I don't think anyone would argue that a park and outdoor activities is huge. And everybody uses the park. I mean, no matter what your income level or what school you go to or if you're homeschooled or if you live way out of town. And then also I did describe it in the explanation, but I proportionally use the non, crossing my fingers that we get the state money for the 60%. I use the other 40% and use it based on assessed value in the school district, how much is inside the city limits and how much is outside at the portion that I came up with in that dollar amount. So I think, I can't remember who mentioned that earlier, that why wouldn't we use, well, we will use ours. But not only citizens of Brookings use Azalea Park, I'm pretty sure. Anyway, and I don't know if there's any other questions you would have regarding Kidtown.
Any questions for Kidtown? I volunteered way back when, when we built it. Can you remember how many?
And we hope to do another in-kind.
How long ago was that?
27, I think. It might be 28.
28 years? Wow. Where did that go?
Only a couple.
Thanks, Janelle.
Yeah, thank you.
You got a quick, just a second.
Okay, sorry.
Well, just, you know, we've had, we've been at this almost a year now or close, it seems. And you hear people say, well, the city's got their own money. And I recognize that. We recognize that, but also that's part of the county. And, you know, I think you'll, people recall me saying, one of the hardest parts of our job is bringing all the groups, cities, communities, everybody together. And so it doesn't matter to me personally. If the city needs, is part of that need, then I'm going to, I'm going to take a fair and, yeah, fair look at that. So, and I, I think other counties are pretty much taking that same approach, even though the funds are separate. It's, it's part of our county. I think it's real important.
All right, thanks, Janelle.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to speak, public comment? Yes, sir.
Can I introduce this guy? My goodness. Sam. When I first come on Board's Commissioner, David Brocksmith said, Sam, Sam Engel and Josh Bowlett, two people you got to get to know. So if you come over from Grants Pass, thank you for, yeah. All Care Health, good, good to have you here.
Well, thank you very much. And I appreciate that you started coming to housing and homelessness meetings before you were even commissioner, which I certainly appreciated. And then I do want to just take a moment also to endorse the, the Brookings Harbor Food Bank and the good work that they do. And got to start working with Pamela right at the beginning when she was brand new and came in during the Chaco bar fire and hit the ground running in really important ways. And certainly the food programs do so much with the very personal daily tragedies that people are dealing with. And then they stand as a resource for the larger, perhaps more universally impactful emergency management situations we find ourselves in periodically too. And thank you for the introduction, Sam Engel. I work for All Care Health. I did come over from Grants Pass this morning and had been actually hoping to come to more meetings recently. But travel restrictions being what they are, it's been a little bit difficult to travel for work. And considering the commission's decision on, as I understand, the Curry Homeless Coalition, it was a little bit difficult listening to parts of the meeting on the way over because cell reception isn't amazing the entire trip. But as I understand, both the Curry Homeless Coalition and homeless services in general, I worry that there's a missed opportunity. Looking at the ARP funding from the point of view of being an excellent way to build out infrastructure and a relatively limited amount of, relatively limited opportunity to take a large amount of federal dollars and turn those into local infrastructure. Housing infrastructure, homeless services infrastructure, we know that these are very important to the community. We know these are very important to each community in the county and the county as a whole. This is underscored by the emergency housing declaration a couple of years ago by Curry County. And I hope the commission will seriously consider and look favorably on our proposals, which address housing needs, shelter, transitional housing and homeless services. Again, we're all aware that this is a serious issue in the county. And of course, no project will be perfect or universally popular, but without action and leadership, the problem will not improve. And that's something that is interesting in this community, but it's true throughout all of Oregon and throughout, especially the West Coast. And so that's, that's really my thoughts. Just please do take a look at places where leadership, even if decisions aren't always popular, but relatively limited dollars and limited opportunities can be used to address what we know are very serious concerns, both for individuals and for community health and wellness altogether.
All right. Thank you.
Good to see you, Sam.
Thank you. And we do have Diana Cooper in the audience. She's the Vice Chair of the ARP Committee. Ron Hedneskog is the Chair and couldn't make it today, but if anybody has any questions for her, she is ready and willing to answer a question or two. Anybody like?
One more comment, I think you had there.
Okay, another comment. Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Just a few questions. I must have missed the part this afternoon about the homeless. And what was the consensus on that?
We voted no.
You voted no?
Yeah.
Okay, so, but it's not up for a vote later?
Nope.
No.
No, okay, so that's very good. I've lived here for 25 years, so.
State your name.
Gloria Jamara.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been here for 25 years and I've watched our community grow and go through the changes that it has. And when it comes to the homeless, that is a Pandora's box that you're opening there. I'm very compassionate to people who want to work to make their lives better. I've helped at least three men get on their feet, get RVs, get jobs and have them work on my property, you know, and, and advise them. So I'm not against that and, and good charities. But you were talking about screening with the infiltration of drugs, fentanyl and meth, not to mention alcohol and mental problems. That's the Pandora's box that I'm talking about that will be coming and we will be vetting and providing for in our community. So if you're ready to deal with the scope of it, but it's already been decided, so I'm glad to hear that. There's another issue too, mental health. I had a friend, she was a wonderful woman, Christian woman, church-going woman, married. And she got long COVID. She could not get the mental help she needed. It attacked her brain and she committed suicide on December the 10th. When I tell this story to people, they tell me they know somebody, exact same scenario. She couldn't get a one-on-one. Everything was a Zoom call, 30 minutes a week. That's all you get. And she went to Grants Pass. She, she tried everything. Her husband's a very responsible ex-retired prison guard. So they're homeowners. I mean, this, this is not a flaky person. I've known her for years. But finding out that other people knew good people, happy people, and in this long COVID, they're committing suicide. But it seemed like it was after they were prescribed psychiatric drugs. And in each case, they had been prescribed something by a doctor for this that just didn't work. We need to keep that in mind when you're talking about mental health because this is not something that's going away, but it's not being talked about enough. So in her honor, I wanted to make you aware, this is a problem. And it's heartbreaking to see somebody that is a wonderful, bubbly, happy person. She told me I'm barely hanging on and she committed suicide within a week of that. I didn't understand what she, you know, I just, because I knew her and, you know, I didn't know it meant that. And then I just had a couple of questions. So when is McKay's Market opening in Brookings?
That is a good question.
It's still probably going to be summer.
Probably not when we can answer.
Maybe June.
Okay, so they still can't get the permits or they can't get the employees or what?
I don't know. None of the three of us work for McKay's.
That's a question for the city council probably.
Okay, all right.
It's outside the city.
No. Maybe Gold Beach City.
Probably Garrett can help, but I do not think it's permits. I know the CFO of McKay's because he went to high school with them and he, that's because it's Brookings, even though he lives in Coos Bay. But anyway, he said that, I mean, permit, you know, there's always delays, not delays in permits, but there's always one more thing and one more thing you need to do. But they didn't say that it was unusual, so don't let, don't let them give Garrett a bad time. A lot of it's the equipment ordering, the shelves, the lighting. I mean, just, I kind of hear the same story. It took hospice forever to open up just up Fifth Street for some of the same reasons. So I think it's a bunch. The last time I heard it was April, but it probably has moved to June. I mean, you're probably right.
Wow, it was going to be last.
But we don't have.
Last August. Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to mention is medium-priced housing. I know you guys are all over it, but I've been told that there are people here besides prison guards, but that own big businesses and have families that are living in trailers because they can't find a house still. And they come home from a stressful job and they're crammed in a trailer with two kids and then the wife. And we need to get some medium-priced housing for people built. And I don't know what that takes, but I just wanted to let you know. It takes the proper zoning.
Of course, he's got a.
That's a perfect segue into my next part.
Oh, good. Well, I'm glad I could be of some assistance. All right, so that's it. And this has been really enlightening for me, so glad to be here.
Is there any more comments? So the next, that's a great segue into it and I would like to see this board look at the possibility of, we don't want to be landlords, you know, I don't, I don't think the county is interested in doing that. But I think this county can help relieve.
But I think this county can help, uh, relieve a lot of issues with housing, um, living wage houses, low-income housing, veterans' housing, um, with some of the properties that we've identified through, um, through some longtime residents that are wonderful people and giving people, uh, have offered some properties in South County, uh, more, almost six acres, and in Central County here up in Gold Beach, uh, to look at the possibility of development. Could we put apartments in there, could we put condominiums in there, could we put single-family dwellings in there? That's to be determined by people smarter than me. But what we can do as a board is to take some of this money and use it for house development and redevelopment in the county, um, helping the planning department to offset some of the fees, infrastructure to get that permitted to get in. We can also use that for, uh, you know, water hookups and all those kind of things. Our building inspector is wanting on one of the, on one of the properties that we have to be the, um, the, basically the design, do, do the design work on it and to, um, actually walk it from beginning to end. And this money we could use to offset the county expense of that. And it would also help to expedite the properties to, to be, to be being developed. And, uh, I think it would help the homeowners, um, that are gonna hire a builder that already have that infrastructure started and/or in, uh, so that when these properties come up on, on, on the market, that, um, they can move quickly on them. These properties, there are three properties that I know of, and they are all ready, shovel-ready, which is a huge thing in Curry County. And I wanna say they totaled between the three of them, and I'm, I'm gonna guess around twenty acres. That's a lot of housing, um, so, um, it's, it's a good interest for us. I would, I would hope that this board would consider, uh, looking into that. If we'd like to have maybe someone from planning or our building inspector come up and, and talk a little bit more about that. But I would, I would like to hold, uh, hold the county's foot too. If, if we're gonna, if we're gonna be commissioners, uh, saying that we're going to help to get housing started, um, we've gotta take some broad steps. And, uh, we've gotta make it possible for people to get a house. I mean, I shared with you earlier what Coos Curry Electric told me the other day about getting Transformers right now. It's crazy to get a Transformer. Uh, it's like a year wait for a Transformer. So with some of the things that we're facing, the sooner that we can come together as a county and start to move some of these things forward and get them in place so that six months or a year down the road from now, we're ready to go, um, that to me is huge. And it shows our citizens, the constituents of this county, that we're serious and we're gonna take the lead on it.
And I don't mind being a landlord. Yes, ma'am.
You have to come to the microphone.
Okay.
You have, that's, you still have to.
There you go. Anybody with a mask with a flag on it gets a, gets special treatment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just hold, just talking to it.
Um, you talk about additional housing for families, which is a great thing. What about the jobs for those families? Are they available?
Well, we are, there's, there's a lot that we're doing in the county right now. This board is pretty much united in, in, in that as well. We are looking at, you know, vocational schools and vocational education training for living wage jobs in this county, like fabrication jobs, millwork jobs, those kind of things that are living wage jobs to keep our kids in this county so that when they're twenty years old, they don't wanna run out the door. You know, there's a lot of changes that are being made. I, I see more vocational jobs coming into this county right now than academic jobs, probably five to one.
And then, okay, you talk about young people, schools, learning, great. But what about giving the kids a place to go and enjoy themselves? Um, a swimming pool, a movie theater, something. Where does a boy take a girl on a date? Here.
I'm not gonna answer that question. Sorry. I have some suggestions, but I'm not gonna go there.
Yeah.
But there are a lot, we have parks, you know, we have a lot of parks. We have a wonderful, we have wonderful rivers, um, to go rafting on or just sit by the side of the river, have a picnic.
A daytime date.
No, there's, there's, yeah, there's not a lot to do in the evenings, yes.
Theater in Brookings?
In Brookings?
Yeah.
I'm talking about here.
There's not even a fast food restaurant in Gold Beach or Port Orford. And we'll get a hamburger at lunchtime when you're packed.
This is all part of the scheme of a community.
But we knew that when we moved here.
Right.
And yes, we are trying to move it forward slowly, but it is trying to move forward.
Oh, let me tell you, I don't miss a mall.
I'll just tell you, I was a youngster when I moved here and I met my wife as a sophomore in high school. And, uh, people say, there's just nothing to do in Brookings. There's, there's a ton of stuff for young folks to do. There's the beach, there's the rivers, there, you know, there's just.
Two golf courses.
We, we live in a, we live in a paradise, and I just never did figure that out as far as there's nothing to do.
These are wonderful paradises for us.
Well, even for young folks, there is, there's.
They don't move much.
Yeah.
Well, that's all I wanted to put in.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you could, here, we'll just hand you the.
No, no, that's okay, I'll come right back up here. So, um, the other ask, thank you, Janelle. The other aspect of the Gold Beach Community Center that I, um, did not mention is our commitment, um, for intergenerational activities, both for youth and adults, but specifically for kids. Um, so we did receive a grant to purchase a lot of, um, uh, activities for, and, and our mission is, um, at the Gold Beach Community Center, is to provide a gathering place to enhance the quality of life for the young to the old. So our goal during COVID has been food centered around making sure we're, um, addressing food insecurity. Our direction, when we can safely open to the public again, is definitely related to youth activities. And I've been doing a lot of collaboration with the school district, with Margie House at 4H, um, and others to make sure that we do have a gathering place for youth in the community where they can go and safely, um, congregate and have activities that are, they are in particular interested, disc golf, cornhole, but also board games and art and other things. So we are very, very attuned to what the needs of the youth are in this community. So look for us in the future about that.
Okay.
And I'd also like to say, I know another place that does a lot of that as well. They, they have horseback riding, they have, uh, a lot of events for kids there. They have a metal shop and a wood shop, and they have all those kind of things there for, for kids to do, and it's free. So there's, there's places around for people to do things. At the VFW. VFW has bingo. I, I'm not sure on that.
I'm sixty-five and I still like to go to Kid Town. I'll play, I'll play tag with, yeah. Get a lot of bumped heads, but it's, it's still good. Anybody else would like to speak to anything that, anything?
Alright.
Diana Cooper, nothing? You know what you gotta do if you're gonna talk. I know you don't like to be put on the.
Well, I, I didn't get any questions as a committee member, and I, I don't really wanna, um, rehash my application too much since it seems pretty straightforward, so I don't think I'll make a lot of comment. But if anybody does have questions, you certainly feel free to add.
Alright. Well, if that's all, folks, I'll be like Bugs Bunny and say, da, 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 or what's, Elmer Fudd? Yes, ma'am? What is the process from here on out?
Well, I actually think today we could, we could recommend, um, some, some of this money to be spent today. It would have to be a board vote, you could move it over to the board.
See, we can't make any motions or do any business in a workshop, but.
I'm not ready today. No, personally. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I would just hope possibly at the next business meeting, you could have a discussion on these and, and have a vote on some of them.
Okay.
You know, um, you guys amongst yourselves in the next two weeks, rank them how, how you see fit. Um, I'll gladly consult with you on appropriateness so that we make sure that what we're gonna move forward is movable and, um, take the, take the first group that you have and at the next business meeting, make a decision on them. You know, yea or nay so that people know whether, you know, like you did this morning, can't keep kicking a can, you gotta make a decision. So that would be my request of use for the next business meeting.
We need that, we need that push because I am the king of procrastinators, and so I need that.
It's only because you're a year older than me.
So did that help, that answer a little bit of your question, ma'am? Okay.
So can we just, as of now, say?
Oh, Diane? Okay, yeah.
And I will make this comment as Vice Chair there. So, um, in looking over these applications, and I've very, very thoroughly reviewed all of the ARP information for several months, um, I do, along with our recommendations, I do have each, um, item and each category that each application fits under if there's any question or concern about the validity to the applications that the committee put forward. Because we did not put forward any applications that do not qualify under ARP.
Could you email us that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, email that to all three of us, please.
Absolutely.
It's promised. And JJ, so, so can we just, uh, put this on as an ARP for the next meeting?
Mr. Barnes, Treasure Barnes?
Discussion and action, or action item.
You want a question for Dave?
What is it, what is the drop, what, how do you interpret or read the drop dead deadline for the first one point two, or excuse me, two point two?
I'm, I would have to look it up again, it's been floating. It's been floating for a while, I am not exactly sure at this moment as I stand here.
The reason I ask is I had a citizen tell me that it was tw- two, we can initiate the funds, uh, and then, or obligate the funds, excuse me. Uh, the other word you used was, uh, identify or whatever, anyway.
Allocate.
Huh?
Allocate.
Allocate, good, thank you. And then, uh, you initiate the funds, that's, that's when it's done. But it'll be to twenty twenty-four.
I heard that this morning, somebody said that, and that's, I haven't had a chance to go back and check on the dead, the exact deadlines again, so I don't wanna comment on that and then be dead wrong. So if I could, I'd like.
Yeah, I was trying to put you on the spot so, because I didn't know.
At the next, at the next meeting, I, I'd like to be able to report back what the actual dates for everything are.
Email that to us, too.
Okay.
Thanks.
So how does the board feel as we wind down here? I mean, there's, there's potentially fifty worthy projects, the committee's done some very good work. How does the board feel about, you know, for example, let's say Brookings, uh, or Gold Beach Community Center, we, we did everybody half, so we could, so we, because we're down to just a million now. And, and God forbid, the federal government says you can't save any of it or, you know, hold back some of it. That, that would be uncharacteristic for Curry County too, but, um, how does the board feel about more applicant, or, or more awards, uh, you know, I've never been a grantfunder before, but how do you feel about that as opposed to really coming in precisely on the, the, the applications and, and the amount that they've asked for? Because I can see a lot of them, I, I don't wanna turn down here at all, but I might say, hey, we might do twenty percent less or something like that. You know, I, I'd like to do fifty thousand for Main Street and spread it out between the three cities, you know, or something, for example, just one example.
I personally, uh, I, I don't, I'm not gonna do my, my work up that way. I'm gonna do mine of the top five I'd like to see, or five, top six, and how much. And then if there's extra money after that, then maybe spread that equally. But, but I, I think we need to focus on what we're charged to do here. And, uh, and that's just, that's just me talking, not for the whole board. I, I feel like I need to focus on what I'm charged to do here. And, uh, and, and that's the approach I'd like to take. I, I think it's fair that we all have our own approach. And then we, we just get together at the next meeting and say, well, this is the way I looked at it, this is the way I looked at it, this is the way I looked at it. And the more information we can have, the better decision we can make.
Thank you. And, you know, along those lines, city Gold Beach, they put all their chips on one project, and I admired that. Because it was housing, uh, you know, I, I'm sure that was a tough decision, uh, but it got my attention. I'm not, I'm not promoting that or recommending that for us, at least not at this point. But when, Commissioner Passion, when it comes to housing development, uh, you know, we know if we don't have developer incentives, we're not gonna get anything built here. But I would recommend that, or I can vote on any potential three, uh, different locations for, you know, possible housing. I'd wanna see an application on that, or at least some very upfront information so that I know that, you know, it's, uh, you know, who, who the players are, what exactly is going on, and go from there. So I would, I would encourage you on that to bring those people in, or, you know, maybe you can do that on your own. But yeah, right now I'm leaning towards at least giving a reasonable amount of many projects as we possibly can. There's so many worthy.
Do we have a, do we have a timeline when the next allocation is? Okay, thank you.
And, and the, and the only other thing, um, we seem to be a little bit urgent, so the next meeting is the sixteenth. Do you wanna do another workshop? I, I, I think this has been very productive, that, that's just my opinion, but the more information we get, the better, the better we can do on decisions. And so it's, it's fun, but it's also, there's some real tough challenges here to, to include wherever we possibly can.
I don't know if we need another workshop on it.
I think it's been workshopped, so we just gotta make a decision.
Come up with some decisions.
So on the sixteenth, do you wanna wait a month? Do you wanna just have, uh, you know, action items, uh, separate action items? Or no, it could be one agenda item with, you know, A, B, C, D, whatever projects, you wanna do that?
And then just individually vote on them and?
That'd be, under one discussion action item, you could do under one item and list all of the things that you're looking to vote on and what you'd like to see on it. That would be the way to do it.
But you, okay, if you're gonna vote individually though, which we would, we would probably have to have separate agenda items to.
It could be like seven or, or six A one, six A two, six A three, and do it that way.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Alright. That's all I have for the workshop, sir.
Okay.
The only thing I said was, do you wanna wait a month? I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Oh, I'm okay with next week, I'm not, I'm okay with this next meeting.
So the sixteenth?
Yep, two weeks.
Good for me, thank you.
Two weeks from today?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Alright, two weeks from today.
Thank you guys for coming.
Be safe, everyone.
We're gonna do a little more executive session and, uh, we can take a little break?
Five minutes?
Five, ten minutes?
Ten minutes, alright.
Ten minutes, I, Eric, we can shut her, can't?